Aloha mai kau ko. Welcome to the hearing on the House Committee on Agriculture and Food Systems. Today is March 13, and we're here for the 9:00 AM agenda in Rome 325 here at the Hawaii State Capitol. I'm Kirsten Kahaloa, Chair of this committee, and today we have with us Vice Chair Kush and Representative Perusso. Good morning, everyone. Just a couple of housekeeping rules before our hearing gets started. In order to allow as many people to testify, please keep your remarks as succinct as possible. It's not too crowded, so we should be fine today. For those joining us via Zoom, keep yourself muted and your video off while waiting to testify. And after your testimony is complete, the Zoom chat feature is for technical issues only and to communicate with our technical staff. If you're disconnected unexpectedly, you may attempt to rejoin the meeting, and you may be able to continue your testimony if time permits. Please note that the House is not responsible for any bad connection or other issues to be able to give your testimony today. If there's any network failure, we may have to reschedule this hearing or reschedule for decision-making only. In that case, an appropriate notice will be posted. Please avoid using any trademarked or copyrighted images, and please refrain from profanity or uncivil behavior. Such behavior may be grounds for removal from the hearing without permission to rejoin and join us today. Thank you for being here this morning. Our first and only bill on this hearing notice is SB 894 SD 3 relating to education. Appropriates funds to the Department of Education for regional kitchen expansion to fulfill the local farm-to-school meal goal, requiring 30% of food served in public schools to consist of locally sourced products. First testifier on the agenda today is Hawaii Department of Education.
Good morning, Chair Kahaloa, Vice Chair Kush, and members of the committee. Dean Uchida, Deputy Superintendent with Department of Education. The department stands on our written testimony in support of this measure. I'll be around to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. University of Hawaii System, Dean.
Mahalo for the opportunity, Chair Kahala and Vice Chair Kush and Member Amy Perusso. We strongly support this bill, and we believe that this bill has a great potential for increasing local food production, enhancing Hawaii's self-sufficiency in food. And we are here for any questions that you may have.
Thank you for your testimony. We have Hawaii Department of Agriculture.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Cedric Gates here on behalf of the Department of Agriculture. The department stands in strong support of this measure, and we defer to Department Education for establishing the regional kitchens in each county. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, we have D-Bed.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and Member Perusso. Thank you for the opportunity. D-Bed stands in strong support on this measure. In addition to our testimony, I just wanted to put out a couple other points of not just what the regional kitchen means to child nutrition, but economically what this means to our food security and resiliency ecosystem. The structure alone in time of a natural disaster can be repurposed to provide meals to the communities in time of need. Our schools turn into shelters. We can rely on D-Bed, sorry, DOE to continue providing meals to those in our shelters. That is true resiliency, having that infrastructure in place. The second thing is with the uncertainty of the federal government now pulling back funds from procuring local. If the state had this in place and we have to fill that gap, we would have been certain to have that dollar stay in our economy. Now, we're going to be looking at importing those dollars out to fill that local food supply. So I hope we can get this bill through and support that initiative, not just for child nutrition, but for resiliency and security. Mahalo.
Thank you. Next, we have Agribusiness Development Corporation in support, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, Representative Perusso. Brad Miamora here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. Will stand on the written testimony in support.
Thank you. We had support from the Purple Maia Foundation and individual testimony. And Sean Komisato on Zoom. Thank you for your testimony. Would anyone else wish to testify on this measure? Members, any questions?
No questions.
Representative Perusso.
D-Bed, please. So, you know, we've been talking about this approach for a long time. And we see that this is estimated to cost just $55 million just for the additional design and expansion and construction, just for the Whitmore site. And is that kind of consistent with your understanding that it's that that's the price tag?
For I don't, as for the future sites, I don't know what the price tags are geographically, if infrastructure is available, if existing.
Right, right. No, I'm just talking about like the $55 million is just for the expansion of Phase One Whitmore. And then there's additional cost estimation. Well, it's okay.
Representative, do you want to ask the Department of Education?
Yeah, I was gonna say DOE has the figures in their building.
Well, my question is actually for D-Bed.
Okay.
Because I'm, well, you might not know, so ask the Department. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, member.
Might not know either, but I'll try.
So I'm curious as to whether this is incorporated into the governor's budget. So we just passed the House budget over to the Senate yesterday, and I didn't note this in the governor's budget.
It's not included in the governor's budget.
Okay, so this is an additional appropriation item.
That's my understanding, correct.
Okay. Thank you so much.
That's it. Thanks, Chair.
That's it. Any other questions, members? We are going to take a brief recess till we have more of our committee members here for decision-making. Thank you. Aloha mai kau ko. We're resuming the House Committee on Agriculture and Food Systems on our 9:15 agenda item. Still today on March 13, we're going straight to decision-making for SB 894 SD 3 relating to education. This is our farm-to-school measure. We're going to create a House Draft 1 and defect the date to July 1, 3000. Make technical amendments to this measure for clarity, consistency, and style. We are gonna update the bill line items for the appropriation request per the Hawaii Department of Education's testimony. We do have line items right now for that, but we don't have them divided by fiscal year. So we're just gonna make a few more blank spaces to match the appropriation requests from the Hawaii Department of Education. But the physical appropriation amounts will be put in the standing committee report. So we'll have blanks, but we need to fix the way the chart is listed in the measure. And that is all we're doing to this bill at this time. Members, any questions or concerns? Representative Perusso?
So noting the allocation amounts included in the testimony by the Department of $55 million roughly fiscal year 2026 and $16.5 in 2027, and also considering the Council on Revenue's projection from yesterday, which shows us moving into a recession, it's hard for me just on that basis to support this measure because it is an additional appropriation, not included in the governor's budget. And additionally, I will say I've always been hopeful that we could combine this model or create a more hybrid approach to farm-to-school. And in particular, this project is an issue because it is sited in a tiny village with one road in and out, and will directly impact in very negative ways that community of Whitmore Village. So for those reasons, I'm a no on this measure. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Perusso. Members, any other additional comments or concerns? I just want to note that there is a large appropriation, and one of the goals is to start with this appropriation bill to put the infrastructure for facilities across the state. So the entire appropriation amount covers So the entire appropriation amount covers statewide support for facilities, for planning and design, for our communities, also on other neighbor islands. So I'm really excited to have the opportunity for that expansion to move beyond a facility, regional kitchen, just on Oahu to multiple on this island, but then other facilities across the state. If there are no further questions, we're going to move to vote. Vice Chair for the vote.
Thank you, Chair. Voting on SB 894 SD 3. Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Loewen?
Aye.
Noting Representative Perusso, no, and noting Representative Quinlan and Ward both excused. Absent. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, Vice Chair. With no other further business on this agenda, we are adjourned. Thank you for your testimony today.